This time we'll call the meeting to order. This is the special meeting for September 3, 2019. The meeting was supposed to be this evening, but we had a scheduling conflict and we moved it to this morning. We have a somewhat lengthy agenda and I would like to, before we begin, to ask everyone to make sure their cellphones are on silent or turned off. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Spears if he would do the invocation for us.
It's about our heads. Father, we come to you this morning, Lord, and we ask you to guide and direct the actions of this court, Lord, that it might always be in your will and in the best interest of the citizens and workers of this county. We ask you that on the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Tackett?
Here.
Commissioner Booth?
Here.
We have a quorum and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Mr. Jim Absher if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Absher. Next item is the approval of the minutes for August 6, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The next matter is, we have a special guest here, Mr. Sheriff Rodney Scott. Sheriff, would you like to come up and have a seat?
Thank you, Judge. How are you today?
Good. Is the air conditioner working upstairs?
It is.
I heard it was a little warm.
Currently working.
A lot of things are currently, well, there are some things that are currently working in the county and some that are not, so...
The only thing I need, Judge, is just acknowledgement of our settlement on our property tax, our gas and oil tax, and our quietus so we can open up our new accounts for this year.
So we have on the agenda to acknowledge or see the Pike County Sheriff's settlement statements for the 2018 real property taxes and 2018 gas and oil property taxes. Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Motion.
That was a tie.
Go ahead.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Sheriff, give me other business to come before the court.
That's it, Judge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We actually have this on as two separate items. We probably need to do them separately. Is there a motion for approval for a quietus for the Pike County Sheriff's settlements?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The next matter is the approval to purchase the OmniTrax Roadnet telematics. And that is something that Judge Hickman and Commissioner Robertson and Mr. Maynard have worked on. Judge, Justin, why don't you go ahead and tell us what that is?
Yes, Judge. As you know, back in, back last year, we had decided to go with Verizon. At the time, it was FleetMatics and then they changed the name to Verizon.
I want to interrupt you.
Yes.
You might want to just explain to the public, we went with Verizon for what?
Oh, yes. That was their GPS units that we put on the solid waste vehicles. And recently, we have upgraded to some of the roadlot vehicles. We went with them last year, last August. We have had some issues with Verizon with the unit not reporting the data accurately. Like, for example, we've had a truck stuck at 104 Chloe Creek Road for three days. And I had contacted Verizon on about four separate occasions trying to rectify that situation. And the last response I got was that it was because of air trees while the units wasn't reporting. At about that point in time, I'd met with Deputy Judge Hickman to discuss maybe going a different route. And we came across OmniTrax. The OmniTrax system, Verizon pings at every two minutes. So we get data every two minutes on the location of that vehicle, what that vehicle's doing. And that is every two minutes with OmniTrax that will ping every six seconds. So we'll know every stop, every movement that the driver's made, which helps in solid waste because of missed pickups. We'll know if they were at that house or not. So that'll help rectify that. In addition to that, we're also getting an upgraded system. So right now, all the foremans have to call, they have to text or call me every morning and update me on who's in what truck. We do this on a daily basis, every day. With this one, we'll be getting a key fob, which when they get in the truck, they'll just swipe that key fob. It automatically registers them to that truck. So there'll be no more of that. So there'll be no question about who's in what truck that day. We're also getting a buzzer system that will alert the driver of unsafe driving behavior. That's all tied into that key fob purchase. So it is an upgraded system. I really like it. They do a lot of companies such as FedEx, Walmart, oh, Judge Hickman, who else was on that? FedEx, Walmart?
Yeah. Let me read you the list. FedEx uses this product, Walmart, Pilot, Maverick Trucking, Pilgrims, Albertson, Staples, Ace Hardware, LabCorp, Celadon, Snyder National, Smuckers, Cisco, Office Depot, and that's just a few of them. Let me, let me add one other thing here, too. The first year savings will be $787.65. That's not a big savings. The second year and thereafter, the savings is $2,500 a year over what we have now. And there is no contract. And this is a much simpler install. This installs directly into the truck computer system. It's a plug and play.
Yes. They told me it takes five minutes to install this into a truck. Whereas, JJ, how long did it take to install the last ones? Twenty minutes? About twenty minutes? So this will be, this will be a reduced process. It'll be five minutes.
Just my observation on this, and I know this is something that Mr. Maynard and Judge Hickman have worked on, we, there was some, a lot of people that questioned the prior court. And I think it's one of the things that the prior administration or prior administrations did correctly was by putting GPS units in the trucks. And a lot of people, you know, it's a waste of money. And I know some of the employees didn't like it. But here's the benefits that I see. It's a fleet safety issue. If that data helps us avoid motor vehicle crashes, it helps us prevent injuries to our workforce, to the public, it lowers insurance costs. It also, on our solid waste, and I think Mr. Morley would attest to this, it allows us to track the routes and see how long it's taken drivers to run certain routes. It's what we're using to try to make the routes more efficient. It's also helped us identify employees that weren't doing their jobs. We've had instances where employees have just sort of disappeared. Instead of going back when they finish a run, they just disappear. We've had at least two, maybe three instances of that. And, you know, it's, it's helped us to weed out some bad apples. So there are a lot of benefits to doing this. And I feel that it's something we need to do and that, you know, when you see the largest corporations in America that have fleets massively larger than ours, realizing that it's important to track this type of data, you know, it certainly is something we need to do. Is there any questions or comments about this?
I think it's a great system to keep up with the trucks and keep up with what speed their boys are doing, how they're driving.
And I think it prevents wear and tear. I think it prevents abuse of equipment. And so is there a motion to, let me back up, may I ask? So the contract with Verizon is up. Is that correct?
Yes. I talked to, his name is Joshua Snip. I talked to him this morning. We have no contract and we also keep the hardware, so we don't have to send any of that back.
Okay. So the question is, if we approve the purchase of the OmniTrax Roadnet telematics system, when will we start installing these? And I think you said there is no contract on this. Is that correct?
No, there is a contract on this. I was going to say it's a 36-month contract.
Okay.
With OmniTrax.
And Mr. Keane, have you had an opportunity to look over that?
I have not.
Okay. Why don't we move this to the back of the agenda so Mr. Keane can review the contract just briefly before we act on it? Would there be any objection to that? Rodney, would y'all have any objection to letting Kevin review this real quick before we vote on it? Okay.
(Inaudible).
All right. We're going to move over to the next item. It's a first reading of an ordinance approving a lease with Community Trust Bank for the financing of 10 Mack trucks and authorization to execute various documents related to such lease. This is a renewal of the leases on the seven dump trucks that we, and the three roll-offs that are used in the road department in solid waste. Instead of going through CAECO this year, I think we, Mr. Stacy, is it correct that we got a better rate through Community Trust Bank? And, you know, it's my preference that we keep our money local instead of sending it to CAECO in Frankfurt. If we get a better rate here, Community Trust Bank is one of the largest employers in the county. They pay, their employees pay occupational tax to the county for those branches out in the various locations throughout Pike County. So is there a mo, well, let me back up. Mr. Keane, I guess it's on for a first reading only. Would you please present the first reading for an ordinance approving a lease with Community Trust Bank for the financing of 10 Mack trucks and authorization to execute various documents related to the lease?
Yes, Judge, you've just read the summary. As you said, this is a first reading, so there is, there's no vote necessary at this time. Anybody that wants to take a look at the ordinance in its entirety can do so in the judge's office and it'll be on to next meeting for a second reading.
All right. Thank you. This lease program is actually making the county money. We have, over the last three years, I'm not sure exactly what the new total is after last year, but we've made money on this. And the way it simply works is we, as a government entity, don't have to pay the federal excise tax nor the state sales tax. So when we lease the vehicles, we can drive them for a year or less. They're under warranty, so we're not having to shoulder any cost. And when that one year's up, we have a contract to where at the minimum, we get 85% back. Is that correct, Mr. Stacy? But actually, what we've been able to do is we've been able to make, instead of 85%, we've actually been making money on these trucks.
Yeah. Last year, we actually sold the trucks for more than we actually paid for them.
And I think-
That was the first year that that's happened. We've, there's been a couple of years that we've been close to breaking even, like maybe within $1,000 of the sales price of what we gave for the trucks. But last year, we actually sold the trucks for more than we actually gave for them on the seven dump trucks.
All right. So that will be on for the next meeting. The next item on the agenda is the awarding of bids. Mr. Fannin, do you have anything?
We've actually had three bid openings since our last court meeting. First bid opening was on August 22nd on bid number 312019 for structure demolitions and site reclamations. There were four properties that, that were actually bid on. We had two bidders. The first bidder was Pikeville Paving and Construction. On site number one, 18 Rocky Court Pikeville, their bid was $10,600. On site two, 28 Rocky Court Pikeville, Kentucky, their bid was $11,000. On site three, 6450 Zebulon Highway Pikeville, their bid was $9,500. And on site four, 1889 State Highway 292 West Belfry, their bid was $13,200. The second bidder was Prater Construction of Pikeville. Site one, 18 Rocky Court Pikeville, their bid was $11,000. Site two, 28 Rocky Court Pikeville, their bid was $11,000. Site three, 6450 Zebulon Highway Pikeville, their bid was $11,000. And site four, 1889 State Highway 292 West Belfry, the bid was $11,000. My recommendation that we award the bid for site one and site three to Pikeville Paving and award the bid for site two and site four to Prater Construction.
I have a question. It looks like Pikeville Paving Construction was the low bidder on sites one and three. Prater was the low bidder on site four. You know, on site two, there is a typo there. It says site 21. That should be site two for Prater Construction. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there was the same bid between both companies, correct?
That's correct.
How did you determine to award, since the bid amounts were equal, how did you base your recommendation on toward that to Prater as opposed to Pikeville Paving?
Well, one of the reasons is Pikeville Paving has never done any workforce. Prater Construction has. So in this way, we're kind of seeing if Pikeville Paving can do these type of projects for us. So we awarded them two and we awarded Prater Construction two.
All right. Makes sense. Is there any question or discussion on that? Is there a motion to award bid number 31, 2019 for structure demolitions and site reclamations for sites one and three to Pikeville Paving and sites two and four to Prater Construction? We have a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Tackett. Is there any question or discussion? And is this money that we're going to get back, Mr. Kaiser? Will be reimbursed, so, okay. All right. Seeing no other question or discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Fannin?
The second bid opening that we've had since our last court meeting was on August 28th. It was bid number 33-2019. It was for seven new 2020 leased tandem triaxle dump trucks. We received one bid from Worldwide Equipment. Their bid was $144,922. Last year, their bid was $2,000 less or $142,922. The total for the seven trucks will be $1,014,454. My recommendation is to award the bid for seven new 2020 leased tandem triaxle dump trucks to Worldwide Equipment for a total bid price of $1,014,454.
And just so that folks out there listening to this will understand, this is the same, the trucks that we're leasing that we just approved, the financing with Community Trust. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we're not going to be out of pocket $1,014,000. This is part of the lease where we're, keep them a year and then take them to us.
And actually, you had talked about how well we had done on this lease program in the past, but actually, on this year when we do it, we have only had the trucks nine months instead of a year, which is going to help us. Also, I think last year, because of our credit situation, we had to pay 20% down on the trucks that we're turning in now. So we should see a little bit of a financial windfall after this transaction's executed.
All right. Is there a motion to award bid 33, 2019 for seven new 2020 leased tandem triaxle dump trucks to Worldwide Equipment for the total bid price of $1,014,454?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
The third bid opening that we've had since our last court meeting was also on August 28th. It was bid number 34-2019 for three new 2020 leased roll-off transfer trucks for the solid waste department. We had one bid. It was from Worldwide Equipment. Their bid amount was $158,760. Last year's bid price was $4,000 less or $154,760. The total bid price for the three trucks would be $476,280. My recommendation is to award the bid for the three new 2020 leased roll-off transfer trucks to Worldwide Equipment for a total bid price of $476,280.
Is there any question or discussion? Is there a motion to award bid 34, 2019 for three new 2020 leased roll-off transfer trucks to Worldwide Equipment for the total bid price of $476,280?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Fannin, anything else?
That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next item is Pike County Road Supervisor's Report. Mr. Little, would you update us a little bit on the flex, state flex fund paving projects that we've got going on?
Well, we have Brian in his, in his area there in Williamson. We have all of his flex laid. Jason, we still lack Hopkins Ford for him. And then we're going to be starting into the Belcher area to, on his, and then we will lack Ronnie Robertson. So, I mean, everything's going pretty good. We'll probably get just a little bit behind until we get these new trucks in, but we're going to get it done.
All right. What about pothole patching? That was something that we were-
Well, like I talked to Gary today, he's finishing up in Belcher area. He'll have all of his. He'll have a complete round done. I'm thinking District Five, Area Five will be the one that I'll have to give a little help to, but we'll also get in.
All right. And how are we on our weed mowing?
Weed mowing, we're still behind.
All right.
We're still mowing.
How's it, have we, are all six mowers in operation now or we still have some?
Yeah. Well, we still have some issues, but yeah, we're keeping them. We're all, we're still mowing, though.
All right. Do we have any major equipment issues right now that we need to, to address?
Everything, I've got, weed mowers are the biggest thing, but then excavators, we need some, we need some excavators.
We're aware of that. We're working on it. Have you gotten everything in to Judge Hickman and to Mr. Stacy as far as the capital plan that we're trying to-
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, every day I find something else, but I've got the biggest bulk of mine already turned into Mr. Hickman.
All right. We have before us the Road Department Progress Report, and this was posted on Facebook and also, I believe, on Pike TV. And I believe they're going to do that again. And it is color-coded. It shows what percentage has been completed. It shows what has not, has been approved to be done. And it looks like there's been quite a bit completed, but there's still some, some issues, various issues out there. Few items that need approval. Have the members of the court had opportunity to look at the report? Commissioner Robertson, you all have any questions or do you think y'all need to add to this?
No. The only thing I was going to ask Fabian, how many, how many tractors, new tractors do we have with the sickle bars on it?
Three.
Can we look maybe through this winter and see if we can replace those sickle bars with a side-mounted unit?
Yeah, and that's needed. We don't, I don't like the sickle bars. Those drop decks, the center drop decks are the best, is the best way to go. We looked last year and I think we had a price of somewhere around $30,000 per unit is about what it would cost. And with our financial, you know, we couldn't, we just couldn't do that.
I know that. I know the sickle bars is making it hard on you on the weed cutting, too.
It does. And, you know, you can't cut as wide and it doesn't cut as good. It won't cut on a slope. So, yeah, there's issues.
Well, I thought maybe this winter, we might find somebody that's got a deal on summer.
There you go.
Well, I mean, and this is probably something that Commissioner Robertson, are there auctions? I mean, you know, I, when I came in office, I was pretty adamant that we're not going to be going down to the state auction and buying, you know, my theory was if it's already worn out by the state and they can't keep it in service, we certainly can't. But are there used equipment auctions that you can buy quality and slightly used equipment like a side-mounted, you know, side-deck mower attachment?
I don't have it with me. I had a brochure here, I think it was in North Carolina. I think they were having a, a equipment auction. And some of this machinery and stuff is just not, they can't sell it for new because they've been rented for a little while or whatever. And they bring a lot of this equipment in there to auction. And some of it's good-looking equipment. Fabian and I have talked about maybe going to one of them and see, you know, what all they do have.
And this is a question for Mr. Stacy. Can the county go to a public auction like that and buy it without having to put bids out and that kind of thing?
They can.
Okay.
Public auctions, yes.
Public auctions, we can. And we just have to authorize expenditures up to a certain amount of money for, say, excavators, mowers?
I would have to have a, like a preapproval for the limit on the check to send with them because I'm sure they would have to have a check that day. And I wouldn't have a way to get it to them to the exact amount. So there would have to be a cap put on the check with a court order. And then that would authorize whoever goes to that auction up to that dollar amount to spend.
Okay.
So I always say err on the side of caution because they may only go wanting to buy $50,000 worth of equipment. But, you know, get your limits set to where if you see something that you do want that you're not expecting, make sure that, because once you put that cap on that check, you can't spend any more. So, I mean, just because you set the limit high on the check doesn't mean that's what you're actually going to spend.
The downside I see to an auction is that you're, you know, you're, you're basically foregoing the ability to either, to lease it where you could defer payments and get newer equipment. But also, is it fair to say that if you do that, then you're most likely not going to be able to finance it? You're going to have to, to purchase it outright or have some pre-arranged financing with, say, a bank or financial institution? Is that-
Right.
And I, I think, Judge, some of this equipment, there's warranty on it.
And that's something that you don't get at a state surplus auction. I mean-
That's true.
I mean, JJ, would you come up here just for a second and just have a seat? Mr.-
(Inaudible).
You, Mr. Justice, just so that folks out there will know, you are the manager of the county's maintenance garage that takes care of all the county vehicles and equipment for solid waste, the roadlot and public works. The equipment that's been bought previously by, at state surplus auctions, how is, what kind of, what's been your experience with, with what we've been able to get through the state?
Well, most stuff that we get in, that they go and buy, they brought back, we'd have to do quite a bit of work to it to get it up to par to where we could put it on the road. Some of them, transmission problems, you know, just, you know, big issues. And that stuff is, is now, we're keeping it in the garage all the time. Like the dump trucks that they've bought, I've got three of those over right now that the rust- that they've bought, I've got three of those over right now, that the rust has took over, you know, their fuel tanks, air tanks, all that stuff is eat off and gone.
I mean, has most of it just been a maintenance problem when it's been bought at, at a state auction? Are we having to spend a lot of money just keeping it in service?
Yeah, and we've got a couple over there now, Ronnie knows about a couple of flatbeds, pickups that they bought, and they're not, you know, that we're gonna have to spend quite a bit of money just to get those on the road, and really...
I mean, is it even worth spending the money on them?
No, they're not worth...
I mean, here's what, here's what I need to know, okay? You know, Commissioner Robertson's been in the wrecker business and garage business a long time, you've been doing this a long time. It's important that you tell us if there's something over there that's, that we're spending more money on than it, than the benefit we're gonna get out of it, we need to go ahead and get it out of service. We don't need to spend that money, just throwing, it's throwing good money after bad.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and, and, and I came in, I said that was gonna be something we tried to eliminate, it's important that you tell this court, we don't need to fix this, we don't, we need to take this out of service, whatever that may be, because, you know, and I think it's fair to say that we've got one Mac Packer that we spent 600-plus thousand dollars on, that we could've bought basically three new trucks for what we spent keeping that one on the road.
And now...
I mean, is that, is that fact, is that factual?
Yeah, uh, but now that truck is probably one of the better old trucks we've got, because we've replaced everything on it at least once.
Well, at least once.
Yeah, as far as running and stuff, it is probably one of the better old trucks that we have.
Well, I think when we get it up to where it's close to a million, we probably need to take it out of service.
We're in that area now.
I think Judge, we need to look at that, and what we've got over there, we need to start putting in the lot ready for sale, have an auction on it.
And when would be the best time to, to do a auction for the equipment, because, look, if we've got stuff we're not using, let's get rid of.
Yeah.
We can get together, get together enough right now to where we could have a far, a fairly decent option.
Think we... Go ahead, Jay. Could we do it in October?
Yeah, October, anytime, you know, I, like I said, I can, I can round this stuff up in, you know, in a matter of a week or so.
Okay.
That is, that we're gonna have to put more money in than for it.
Yeah. Let's do this, before the next court meeting, you present us a list, let's put it on the agenda at the next court meeting to authorize a surplus auction, is that what we need to do, Mr. Stacy, just authorize it?
Auctioneer.
We can put that on it.
We have to average out about a month.
Right, and we can authorize it at the next meeting and do it in October, do it end of October, first of November, and before the weather gets bad, and whatever money we get out of it's money that we can find better uses for, so, but try to get us a list together, if you could work with Commissioner Robertson on that, and Commissioner Booth, Commissioner Tackett, I'm sure on their various road lots or solid waste lots, if they've got ideas about what we need to go ahead and get rid of, um, some of the trucks up there that have been taken out, like the old Mini Packers, O3 models and stuff, if we, what parts we can't cannibalize from them, I mean, we'll be better off just trying to scrap them out for scrap metal.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I, you know, one of the things I'd like to do is clean that lot up up there, 'cause it looks, you know, it, there's times it doesn't look too good, and we need to get some of that junk out of there.
We've got several pieces up on the bottom now that we've already put out of commission, and...
Got it.
A few dump trucks on these road lots that needs to be took out. Beds is gone, and the cabs is, floorboards eat out of them, and they're...
Fell out on the fuel tanks?
Yeah, fuel tanks, that's with thousands of...
He's, he's exactly right, and I'm all for taking these trucks out of service, but what we gotta remember is when we take them out of service, I don't have that truck no more, you put me behind, so...
Yeah, we gotta have something to go back there.
One of the things I think we need to look at is if, this is just me, and I'd like everybody's input on this, if we're leasing seven dump trucks and we're making money on it...
I'm with you, I, I agree.
Why aren't we leasing more of them?
I agree.
Now, that's, that only makes sense if, you know, even if these dump trucks, if we lease seven more of them, or six more of them, one more for each road lot, where you'd have two on each road lot, do we need two on each road lot?
We could use them, but now there's also a place for these six-wheelers, most of the ones that he's wanting to replace are the smaller dump trucks, and we do need, uh, we do need a couple of those on these lots.
Well, we, we just need to go to a 33,000 GVW, Fabian, a, a six-wheeler, and get, what, two per lot?
Yeah, something like that.
Two per lot or one per lot, 'cause you got the big one, right?
Big one and one small, well, no, we got two small ones on each lot.
Yeah, we, right now, what we have on each lot, we have the 10-wheelers and two six-wheelers on most of our lots.
Do we use both those six-wheelers every day?
Yeah.
Well, most of the time, we do, yeah.
Here's, here's the question, as far as the lease program would go for the smaller trucks, one is, you know, would there, is there still a federal excise tax on that? I don't think there is, or...
You can get the six-wheel dump trucks on the lease program, you would have to give them probably about a 12-month lead time to get the trucks built and ordered to where you could probably get them like this time next year. The problem, I think, is why they haven't done it before is because those six-wheelers don't sell very well at auction. I think the triaxle is the one that he recommends are the ones that the demand is the best for. Now, you can get the six-wheelers, but I, I don't know how good they sell, and we could get back with him, maybe the, the market on them is better now, but we had talked about this in the past, and, like, the, the resale at auction wasn't that good on the six-wheelers.
I mean, if you bought, if you bought 12 of them, you're gonna end up paying over a million dollars, and you wouldn't wanna be spending a hundred, $150,000 a year on those trucks, 'cause if you can't, if the market, you know, if your auction is 85%, that wouldn't make much sense.
Right, and that's why he never recommended us leasing the six-wheelers before, 'cause we had, we had talked about it before.
But you still may be better off if you lease them...
By the time you touch that factor in your maintenance, the cost...
Factor in the maintenance, the new trucks, we're not, we're spending probably a million and a half dollars at the maintenance garage.
Do we, and another thing you need to look at, because they use these six-wheelers on, uh, doing their salt work, you know, biggest part of them, plows, can we put plows and solders on them, because they're six-wheelers, that's usually what they, they use a whole lot in the wintertime.
And then if you lease them, they might have a complaint about that if you load salt in them, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that, that may not be a good thing if you gave them back to them, they're rusty, but of course, let's, let's back up.
But if we just kept one on each lot, just to salt it?
Well, part of that, part of that, JJ, about the rust, is, you know, if after you used them, they were washed out to get the salt off of them, you wouldn't have the rust issue. My opinion is that you've had inadequate maintenance on the actual road lots, because, you know, they leave them sit there, they, you know, when, when the salt, when they're done, you salt them, they don't ever wash them out, and they should be, you know, when the weather gets better, they need to be cleaned out, because...
Yeah, there's also a chemical that we could spray on there, too, to help, you know, prevent this rust from the salt.
And, and again, you gotta look at, most of the six-wheelers we've got come from the state anyway, and they were...
They were used when we got them.
Yeah, and, you know, pretty bad shape when we got them in.
And it, maybe we can look for something down there, but we, we're gonna have to, what I had hoped to do was once we were able to get the increase in solid waste, that we could accumulate some money, and I had hoped to be able to make a recommendation to the court to replace some of this equipment this fall. I probably would, would encourage the court, to the extent we can, to wait till spring just to see how our finances are, 'cause I don't wanna see this court get into a financial predicament like the prior administrations did, you know, the cash flow issue is, is a problem that plagued the other courts, it could happen to us, too, because declining population, uh, fewer people working, people leaving, you know, I mean, the, the big issue's population loss, so... Is there a thought on that? When, when, or maybe Frankie, when will be, be better, when will be the best, most appropriate time to look at starting to implement the capital plan with regard to solid waste in the road lots?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause that would give us a better idea of what our cash flow would be.
Uh, yeah, you'll have, uh... You'll have three-quarters of your coal and mineral and your occupational net profit, and then you'll have all your property tax collections by March, uh, end of April, so...
Solid waste revenue.
Yeah, you'll have your, uh, solid waste, uh, annual billing went out in January, or in February, so you'll have that collection by then as well.
Something I was gonna bring in back on my desk is the spreadsheet from Tom Ramsey, but we're gonna need much, would you go get there for me? So, if we wait till spring, I think it would be the most appropriate time. I've, I've got Ms. Robinson going to grab something off my desk, 'cause I wanted to just go over it real quick while we're on this subject. Um, is there, if I, do we have, have I made, is there a motion on this yet? Okay, is there a motion, while she's grabbing that, to approve the Pike, the, um, County Road Supervisor's Progress Report, and for approval of the Pike County Commissioners' recommended road maintenance for the next interim period?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. Is there any questions or discussions or anything else that needs to be added on to this?
You have a...
No.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Stacy, would you please go to your business?
I only have two items to present to the court. Uh, the first one would be to authorize a check to Jimmy Kaiser in the amount of $4,000 for lodging and expenses to take the trucks back to auction at Montgomery, Alabama, and this would be like expenses to pay for the, him and the 10 drivers for their rooms and meals, and in case they, we've had it on past trips, broken windshields, busted tires that they had to buy along the way, uh, so that would be, and then he would bring back what he doesn't spend, along with receipts.
All right. Uh, is there a motion to authorize a check to Jimmy Kaiser in the amount of $4,000 for lodging and expenses to return the 11 trucks to the auction in Montgomery, Alabama?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth, is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Last thing I have would be to authorize a check in the amount of $3,960 to Charles Carlton as landfill consultant for the month of August 2019. He was, uh, incidentally left off the expenditure list for last month.
All right. And, um, Mr. Carlton has been a big help because of his, with helping at the landfill. My question is, Larry, do you think that you could transition into doing the same type of compliance stuff that, that we're using Mr. Carlton for?
I'd like to, uh, transition to 2020.
Uh, it would be a substantial savings to the county, and, uh, Mr. Carlton has had some health issues, and we certainly wanna wish him the best, and, uh, but, you know, it would be helpful if you could start working with him some, I'm not sure how long that we're gonna be using his services, but it would be very helpful if you could start working with him to try to, uh, to transition into doing that role as well. All right. Is there a motion to authorize payment in the amount of $3,960 to Mr. Charles Carlton for consulting work done on the landfill?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Robertson, is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
So, I'm just gonna briefly update, um, the, uh, Mr. Tom Ramsey gave me a long-term planning schedule, if I can read this without my glasses, that starts this fiscal year, and it looks like, um... The total cost between now and the end of the fourth quarter of 2022 will be approximately, um, 5,825,000 is about, is what it looks like, and, you know, that's why I'm saying we're gonna have to see how our cash flow is. This fiscal year, the outlay is 225,000, fiscal year 2021, 275,000, and then in 21, 22, and 22, 23, it will be a much more substantial because of the cost of constructing, uh, the next phase of the landfill, the re-permitted, uh, portion. Uh, in that, those last two fiscal years, you're looking at about 5.325 million, uh, so, we're, we need to save as much money as we can, that does not count any of the equipment needs that we need. Uh, this year, uh, we're revising the plan, we're gonna submit the, uh, plan for, uh, reviews to Kentucky, uh, the state, uh, then we'll have, hopefully have, uh, approval in the fourth quarter. We're also gonna be doing, um, the Notice of Intent to Permit, the Submittal to the State in the Permit Review, respond to any comments that are made, and then final review and approval in this fiscal year. Uh, there will be a field investigation and lab work in the first quarter, uh, of 2020, uh, then, uh, that process will continue, that will be mostly what's done this year, we've already authorized the 225,000, and then, uh, we will get into the technical application in the next fiscal year. Uh, so, we're moving along with this, we do have the timeline, if anyone in the press would like to get a copy of this, uh, of course, this is subject to change, I would like to have a copy of this given to Mr. Stacy today, Judge Hickman, I'm not sure who else seen this, most importantly, to the commissioners, uh, because, uh, this was something that was just given to me a week or so ago, and, uh, I've not had a chance to share this, so, I'll get this to you gentlemen at the break. The next item is Executive Session. Uh, Mr. King, would you please instruct the, uh, court on the, uh, applicable law to enter into Executive Session?
Yes, Judge, and if I may, just briefly, I have had an opportunity to look over the Omnitrex contract while we've been sitting here, and I cannot recommend the court to enter that contract at this time, there's a couple of issues. One is clarification, it's not an open-ended, there is a three-year initial term on this contract with the liquidated damages provision of essentially paying out the contract, so that may or may not be an issue, but I did want to clarify. But the problem I've got with signing the, uh, the document, Section 8.8, the governing law and venue, by entering this contract, we are agreeing that any dispute over this contract is to be resolved to the sole and exclusive jurisdiction of the federal courts for the Northern District of Texas, and I don't think we want to do that.
I don't think that's a good idea, either.
So, we need to go back to the drawing board and see if we can get these things worked out before we enter into this contract, that's my recommendation.
So, I would, I would move that we pass, there's a reason that he's sitting over here beside me, uh, he can read faster than any human alive, for one thing, but second, what he's talking about's a choice of venue and choice of law provision. If there, we don't know this company, if we don't have, if we don't have a good experience, and as you know, sometimes these things don't work out, we end up in litigation, we don't wanna have to go to Texas to do it, and that provision would be valid and binding on the court, so it would be my recommendation, uh, that we pass over that until we have an opportunity to speak with them about that contract. It may be a boilerplate standard form, which I suspect it is, but it's worth us having a conversation with them to see if they want our business bad enough to, to change that. Mr. King, I have a very, very, uh, strong opinion about choice of law that, that removes it out of Kentucky, I think Mr. Webster back there probably would agree with that, too.
Taylor, Taylor Dox Court.
Taylor Dox Court, I don't know, you might be better off in Texas. Uh, so, and we'll, we'll revisit that. So, uh, Mr. King, would you please instruct us on the provisions of KRS Chapter 61?
Yes, we need a vote to enter Executive Sessions authorized by KRS 61810, subsection C for pending and proposed litigation, and subsection F to discuss specific personnel matters.
Is there a motion to enter into Executive Session?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are in recess for executive session and will return upon call of the chair. We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned from executive session. Before we begin to discuss two legal matters, Mr. Maynard, would you please present my motion and personnel recommendations to the court?
Yes, Judge. Gentlemen, the following items are up for approval. Is approval to accept Harold Fraley's resignation effective 8/1919. Approval to hire Ethan Willis as a mini packer driver on solid waste lot five at a 3H rate of pay. Approval to hire Kirkland Williamson as a custodian at the Belfry Courthouse at a 2H rate of pay. Approval to move Cody Young to road lot six as a weed mower at a 3H rate of pay effective 9/919. Approval to hire Brian Fields as a weed mower at road lot two at a 3H rate of pay. Approval to move Fitch Reed from solid waste area one to solid waste area two as foreman at the same rate of pay. That is all.
Those are my recommendations and my motion. Is there a second? Ty? We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. Is there any question or discussion?
No.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. The next item on the agenda is some matters dealing with litigation. We had a, we have had a substantial amount of information from the bankruptcy courts coming in, in part due to the Cambrian bankruptcy. But it's not only Cambrian. There's been a bunch of other entities that have filed bankruptcy. One was Birch Communications. That was in New York. And Mr. King, our Assistant County Attorney, nor myself, have any experience in bankruptcy court. It's a very specialized matter, or very specialized area. And we have received just an inordinate number of bankruptcy documents that we need to file claims in bankruptcy court for. We have interviewed Attorney Jim Pruitt that has represented this fiscal court in the past. Think he did some work for the prior administration in bankruptcy court. And we have discussed, there's been a discussion, the commissioners interviewed him about representing the fiscal court solely with regard to bankruptcy matters. Would one of you all like to comment on that? This is on Jim, Jim Pruitt.
Oh, yeah, Jim, I think Jim would be the great, great one to put there to do that for the county.
There's no guarantee that we get any money when we file these claims, but if we don't file the proof of claims, you don't get anything. He has agreed to reduce his hourly rate to 175 an hour. For someone in bankruptcy court, that is a reasonable rate in my limited experience. Is there a motion or is there a, is there a motion by the court to retain Attorney Jim Pruitt to represent the fiscal court on these bankruptcy matters that we've received notices of claim on?
Yes, this time I'll make a motion for Jim to, for that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any other question or discussion on this? Mr. King, anything you'd like to add on this?
No, I agree with the recommendation. At least initially, as far as filing the claims, we're not looking at a significant expense. And at that time, we can determine whether to go further. We may not get anything. We're unsecured. But we need Jim to identify those issues for us so we can make an educated decision.
I think, I think also when we have like a matter in New York that the birch is about $1,500, that's one of those matters where I think we would end up spending more money trying to file the proof of claim because we have to get counsel in New York. And it would seem to me that it would be most likely a waste of money to try to do that. Would that be your recommendation as well?
Unless it's a significant claim, but claims such as you said for $1,500, we can't hire counsel for that, much less recover.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to hire Jim Pruitt at the hourly rate of $175 to represent the fiscal court in various bankruptcy filings. Seeing no other question or discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The other matter is, we have, in executive session, had an opportunity to listen to a proposal for counsel from RCC Big Show relating to, I'm jumping around a little bit here. They have asked us to dismiss the lawsuit that we have filed. And in agreement, they would make a $100,000 payment by December and pay the remaining principal by March. And what is the court's will on that matter?
Judge, you know, when we was campaigning for this, that's one thing was asking, over to Expo, was, would you go after the money? And that's Pike County taxpayers' money. And that's what we've done and that's what we will continue to do. You know, if they can bring money up front, then we'll look, we'll look at it again. But at this time, no.
Is there, is there a motion to reject the proposal that Mr. Webster has made with regard to RCC Big Show?
I will make the motion.
We have a motion to reject that proposal by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any other comments or discussion about this matter?
Larry, I would just say if, if they can bring us some money a little quicker than December, we would probably reevaluate it a little bit. Well, I mean, they have lied to this court before, you know, and that's, you know, I'm, I'm pretty, you know, it's, if the money was there, you know, we could see a little bit different, but you know, if there's no money there, I mean, it's hard for us to just say, you know, we'll drop the lawsuit, you know, we just, we're not.
And we're out $300 more dollars. I mean, $300, $300.
How long ago was it when they paid the $100,000? 2018?
Let me, I can give you the history on it, and I think the public needs to know this. The fiscal court in 2014 gave $400,000 to RCC Big Show. It was about August 14th, August 17th, at 25% per annum interest. And they were supposed to pay it back in August of 17. They defaulted. In the spring of 2018, there were some discussions where if RCC would make a payment of $200,000 in installments by October of 2018, that the fiscal court would defer collection of the other 200 until financing for the project was finalized. The fiscal court never ratified that agreement in open court. Therefore, it's void. The problem is, even if you take that agreement, if it had been authorized, RCC violated it too. And Mr. Webster, you advised me that they've, they've, there are $2 million in debt and that one of the partners is on social security. In reality, this project has no chance of getting off the ground. I've had discussions with the Floyd County attorney. I've discussed this matter with a representative from organized labor that thinks they're going to get to build it. The question I have is where the $2 million went. They don't have a building. I know the gentleman that they leased the property in Floyd County from. It's my understanding they've not been diligent even making the small rent payments to them. You're talking $2 million has disappeared. $400,000, that's Pike County taxpayer money. And we have a, an absolute, we have an absolute responsibility to go after that money. And if they will bring some money to us, I've never been asked to dismiss a lawsuit on a promise in 25 years. And I understand the position you're in representing this client. But being the county judge and representing the taxpayers, and we're not going to make that deal unless they bring something to the table. We're just not going to do that. Well, they need, I'm not going to bid against myself, Larry. They owe the taxpayers a lot of money. If they'll bring some money to the court, we'll reevaluate it. We're reasonable people. And we reject it. We're getting ready to vote to reject that. And that's, that's the end of the story. If they'll bring some money and say, we'll make this payment today, we'll reevaluate it. But we're not going to bid against ourselves and we're not going to dismiss the lawsuit. So we have a motion and a second. Is that correct, to reject the proposal? Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Larry, hang on one second. This court didn't give these people $100,000 on a wink and a nod. And if it means that they file bankruptcy, so be it. But at least we'll have an opportunity for Mr. Pruitt to file a proof of claim for him. And I'm going to amend the complaint and I'm going to sue those two guys individually. They have breached their fiduciary duty to this county. They admitted, they admitted to the members of this court that they took $200,000 each. I believe it was the representation they made. That's in violation of the agreement. You can file your motion, you can file your motion to dismiss when we file the amended complaint. No, because they transacted business here. If you read the Longarm statute, we're going to sue them right here in this amended complaint. But you can, we're not going to argue a matter of law here. We'll argue that over in front of Judge Coleman. So you're always welcome, but we're rejecting the proposal. If they'll bring some money, then we'll reevaluate it. So the next item on the agenda is discussion of the approval of hours of operation scheduling for the Pike County Animal Shelter. Did we vote on that? Did I vote? No, no, I mean, what I'm saying, we're good on the rejection of the proposal, correct? All right. Judge Hickman and Mr. Maynard, would you please present this?
Yes, Judge. As you know, the animal shelter has been collecting data throughout the last three or four months requesting weekends off. Judge Hickman had tasked them with developing a schedule, which they did. And it's, it's a rather detailed schedule. What the hours of the operation would be, would be eight to four, Monday through Friday, and then eight to 12 on Saturdays. It would actually be seven, seven to 12 on Saturdays because you'd have one hour to clean there that morning. But it would be one employee staffed on Saturdays, not taking any intake in. And then they would do that Monday through Friday, eight to four.
So have we gone over the schedule with the employees?
Yes, they're, they're the ones who developed that schedule.
And this has been a problem. The Humane Society in, Pike County Humane Society was adamant that the shelter opened. And we've looked at the data. There are a lot of adoptions on Saturday. It was probably the busiest day, is the fair statement, correct?
It is if you count pet fairs, when they go out and set up pet fairs, pet adoption events. That's why your Saturdays numbers look really, really big. In all actuality, they're running just like any other day.
The biggest problem is, it's forced, the current schedule has forced most employees to work every Saturday.
It forces them all to work every Saturday.
And it, and it really disrupts their family life. And we have committed to trying to find a way to address this. Is there a motion to adopt the revised staffing schedule for the Pike County Animal Shelter?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Tackett. Is there any other question or discussion?
Yes, Judge, I have one other thing before the commissioners maybe jump in. Those hours that we're talking about right there are not necessarily hours open to the public, correct?
That is correct. They would work.
Open to the public would be eight?
No.
Eight, eight AM, is that correct?
No, they would come in at 8:00 AM. There are allotted two hours to clean the shelter and get it operational.
And then open to the public at 10:00?
10:00 to 4:00, correct. And then it would be eight, they would be open at 8:00 Saturday morning and closing at 12:00.
That would be to the public, that's the hours to the public from 8:00 to 12:00 on Saturday, right?
Correct, yes.
That's, and, and how long would this give? It'd rotate every six weeks, you say?
Yeah, where you're only going to work one employee there because they've, they've indicated that as long as they shut down intake, they would be able to staff it with one employee and there are allotted three inmates that work up there that.
On Saturdays?
On Saturdays, yes. So you would have one employee rotating every six weeks to work that weekend.
I think what we talked about was intake on Saturday and emergencies only.
Emergencies only, yes.
Any other question or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the Pike County Department of Supervisors reports or comments. Anything? All right. Next item, Mr. King, anything from the Assistant County Attorney?
Only one briefly, Judge. Last court meeting, there'd been some discussion about a slide at Yellow Hill that Mountain Water District was, had failed thus far to repair. I've talked to Danny Stratton, who represents the Mountain Water Board, and he's advised me that on August 29th, the board did accept a bid to have that repaired. The contract hadn't been signed as of my last conversation with him. But my understanding that was, that was a formality and that they will be getting started on that repair soon.
All right. Judge Hickman, anything? All right. Pike County Commissioners comments, and we'll start with District Three Commissioner Brian Booth.
Yeah, Judge, I'd just like to thank all our employees. They're still doing outstanding jobs, still getting some blacktop done over there. We've got some pothole to get done. I'd like to thank all of them. And had a few calls from Octavia concerning the guardrail. I don't think we've heard anything from them. Have we, Fabian? Nothing. And a few calls from Pigeon Roos concerning that bridge, and we've not got anything from State. I think they've had to move some gas lines and issues with that and all, but other than that, we're just day-to-day operations on our fence.
Commissioner Booth, I was in with Mr. Little and we called the guardrail company. We've looked at. We've looked at some solutions to that, but the guard rail that was taken down at Octavia needs to be put back up. It's the safest thing to do, but it has to be done, as I understand it, by a certified guard rail installer, because if the county does it where we're not certified, and it's not done right, then, you know, then you've got a problem there. We were together and called them, and we have not heard back, they were supposed to be, I thought they said toward the...
Yeah, they were, they were busy for like a month and a half. Yeah, they were busy for like a month and a half or something before they could, which is what he had told me initially, it would be that long before he could get back with me. But I will contact them, because also I need to contact them to get an estimate for Ford Mountain also.
Yeah.
And I was just going to tell you too about the, the mountain over there for Donald Blake. What I've decided probably to do is...
You're talking about Rock House of Sydney?
Rock House of Sydney. What I've decided to do is, since we can't blacktop that, we'll probably just take that paver over there, put down the DGA through those bad spots and roll it in, and that'll get us through till next year.
Right, yeah. Well, I think mainly that Octavia, they know winter was coming back on, they don't, you know, didn't want the same issue they had the past winter and stuff.
Yeah, we're trying, but like I said, there's only limited, and if the guard rail company, we'll call them today.
All day.
And if they don't give us an answer, we'll try to find somebody else, but there's not a local guard rail company to my knowledge. Philip Blackburn used to do guard rail, I think, I'm not sure if he's even still doing that or not.
Hey, you know, I, I just thought, I think that maybe Gary King, I think he may install guard rail, I can...
Well, let's find out who we can get to do it, so let's...
I think he does, you know, King Drilling.
Well, let's ask them if they, if they're certified to do it, then we'll do it.
Right.
Whoever we can get up there first, let's get it done.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Roberts?
Just want to thank all the employees that works for this county, I know they work hard. I think our trail system is moving along, we're getting some mapping done, aren't we, Jason? So, that's about all I've got to say.
And then Commissioner Tackett?
I'd like to thank the workers, just like these other guys, and thank what all you all do here in this office and out in the county. I mean, I know you all have a tough job, you're just like us, because if we get heat, you're getting heat, so, but we appreciate that. I just want to discuss, I just wanted to ask Paul something there about the, up on Elkhorn Creek at the park, did we ever get a chance to, the shelter that was hit with a truck?
It's a Ford and Mack.
Okay, okay. And then the situation up at Rocky Road, on those drain pipes failing, we, we do have, we've...
Yeah, those drain pipes came in, Thomas has them on the lot, we talked this morning, and he's going to start on those this week. Today, he had another one to do, another trap drain to install, but we're going to start on those this week.
Okay.
I'm putting those in up there on Rocky Road.
Thank you. And other than that, I mean, we've got a bad storm coming in on the East Coast, and just keep all those people in your prayers too, along with Pike Countyans and across the country. Thank you all.
Thank you all. I want to just brag a little bit on the, on the members of the court, because we were in training at the Governor's Local Issue Conference last week, and those days can be pretty long, and, but, you know, sometimes it's the information that you learn, but it's also sometimes the contacts that you make, and I think that this court has done a remarkable job in a short period of time of making contacts. You know, we've, we were able to, Governor Bevan presented a $652,000 grant that we'd actually already received a check on down there for the coal run floodproofing project. We've received the $936,000 in, in discretionary road funds that, that's almost unheard of, it was the most of any county in Kentucky. And a lot of judges around the Kentucky, we're not happy that Pike County received that much money. We are going to work with state and federal officials, I've already had a conversation with Hilda Legg from Rural Development, we had an opportunity to speak with her, Judge Hickman and I, and to start the, the ball rolling on getting the infrastructure funding for the Wolf Pit Industrial Site. And, you know, the, the 460 corridor was done in a way that we've got at least four controlled fill sites where we will be able to build on it. That was a, a problem when one that team was built years back, that was never really thought of. So we have to work, in order to be able to bring jobs to Pike County, you have to be, have a place to put them, and that has to be a focus. And I keep saying that, you know, if the finances of the county go well, we'll be able to provide the services our citizens need. If we mess the finances up, then it jeopardizes every service that county government provides. I think we're moving in the right direction. We're still working on the routing, I can tell Mr. Morley that my wife was not happy that our garbage was not picked up. I tried to explain to her, but I got a complaint before I left the house. That is one benefit, I believe that a four-day schedule will allow us, if we can get the details worked out and have the equipment and the manpower we need. It's inconvenient for people across the county that were supposed to have their garbage picked up yesterday. There are a lot of difficulties when you have a county with 788 square miles that you're trying to reroute the, the garbage pickup, there's a lot of inefficiencies. And with all the things that this court has to do, we're doing it as quickly as we can, but I keep saying we need to measure three or four times and cut once, because when we make that change, if it's not done correctly, it's going to cause a world of problems. We're continuing with our solid waste enforcement efforts to stop illegal dumping, and we've charged well over 100 people, and we're going to continue to keep doing that. The sad part of it is, we have a growing meth problem in this county. Some of you may have seen the article in the Herald Leader talking about the Pikeville Police Department, I want to commend the Pikeville Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, the State Police, and all of our law enforcement officers, this meth problem is an epidemic like we've never seen before. The behavior of some of the people who are taking meth is really shocking, they can be extremely violent, and we want to remember our law enforcement community and our first responders are having to deal with that on the front lines, it's something that we have to get our hands around. But a lot of the problems that we're seeing in the county go right back to the drug epidemic. We've got a certain number of people in this county that don't want to be good citizens, that don't want to work to do the right thing, that don't care about our environment, or whatever it may be. And again, I want to thank all, and, you know, some other folks that we need to thank are the people at the jail, our corrections staff, our deputy jailers, our jail staff, they're doing a remarkable job, and they're having to deal with this problem as well. We are making some progress on our capital plan, hopefully, that's something that we're going to be able to present to the court for adoption. Interestingly, you know, our capital plan was done in-house as a way to save money, certainly the people that are running our departments understand the needs and when equipment needs to be replaced, a lot of that equipment needs to be replaced a long time ago. Unfortunately, we don't have the money to do it all at one time. Mountain Water, interestingly, is, is issuing proposals to have engineering companies do a capital plan, and that, that does cause some concern for me when you, when you see the fact that they're not even looking to see if it can be done in-house. They have some very talented people, Mountain Water District, they have CPAs, certainly they could sit down and do this without having to hire an outside engineering firm. There are things that, there are times when a government entity needs to hire outside assistance, for instance, someone who has expertise in, in bankruptcy matters, but when it comes time to doing day-to-day operations and financial planning, that should be something that you should be able to do internally. And I would hope that Mountain Water would reconsider hiring outside engineers before they would look at trying to do it internally. Those are my comments, is there anything else before we close the meeting out, gentlemen?
One thing you brought up, our judge, was about the jail and the, how they've been doing to take care of the parks and stuff, I got a lot of comments this weekend, people visited the parks and stuff, and was really pleased how well they was cut and cleaned and by the jail employees. They was really amazed at what a kind of job they'd done.
Well, well, I want to just say this, without the jail inmates and the jail staff, we would not be able to provide the services to the people with regard to our parks, community buildings, playgrounds, it just wouldn't be possible. There's over 100 inmates working every day, sometimes as many as 125, and if we had to replace those employees with paid labor, it would be over with, there's no way this county could afford to do it, it's too much. And that was one of the problems that when some of this infrastructure was put in place, and there was no plan to maintain it or to keep it up, but we're doing the best we can with what we have to work with, and Mr. Williamson, his crew are doing a fantastic job, and we appreciate that. So, is there anything else? Jerry, would you like to say the benediction for us and close us out in prayer? Jerry Huffman? Jerry, would you come over to the microphone, so that way it can be, you can, either there or there, either one?
Dear Jesus, Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank thee for all that you have blessed us with, and we thank thee for the, and commend the job that the fiscal court is doing, everything. As, as they said, that they're doing what they can with what they've got to do with, and we have need to lead and guide them, and continue to lead the way, everything, for this fiscal court, and we pray that you will go with us as we journey to our homes and throughout this day, and keep us in thy care. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Is there a motion for adjournment?
No.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
We are, yes, we are adjourned.